Good evening, good evening. If everyone could take their seats, we'd like to get started on the 2019 first budget work session regarding the proposed budget for fiscal year 2020. We're gonna, I'm gonna turn the meeting over soon here. First, I'll have some remarks, and I just want to first thank the staff, the associate superintendents, their staff for putting this budget together. I do want to make a note to the public that if you are watching and the budget is available online, they do a really nice job with our budget in the way it's laid out. Each page will describe a certain agency or department within the school system, talk about what their goals were, what they've done over the last five years, what our unmet needs are, what our needs are for fiscal 2020, and then you'll see the line items as you go through it. It's very well laid out. Frankly, you know, I've been a number of boards, and it's probably the best way a budget is put together. So, Mr. Wallingford and your staff, I can't thank you enough for making this very easy for the public to look at and understand and see the trends of where we've been and where we plan to go. So, I do want to thank you. I'm excited about this year's budget, and I'm looking forward to beginning this work session. So, I'll now turn over my remarks to Dr. Walts.
Thank you very much. So, I too am very optimistic about the budget and excited about many of the initiatives that we're going to be able to do with the money in the budget. And again, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from the six priority areas. We've done, I think our communication folks have done a great job of getting the word out as to what we're proposing in the budget. And to lead things off tonight, Mr. Wallingford is going to give us an update in the state revenue changes.
Dr. Latif, members of the board, Dr. Walts, thank you. Brief update, one slide here on what has changed with regard to revenues. The House and Senate put out their budgets on February 8th, and what you see here are the impacts to the Prince Wing County Schools' state revenues. On the House side, you see a reduction of about $2.2 million, and on the Senate side, a reduction of just pushing $4 million. And let me just comment on one or two items. You can see VPI plus. The state was going to supplement the VPI plus money that was going away. On the House side, they've decided not to do that. There's also been a change with regard to guidance counselors and the funding that supports that. So, very simple, very short. Next point, on Sunday, this past Sunday, the conference passed their final budget. We haven't gotten details of that yet. So, what's important to note here is that these reductions you see are subject to what has been approved, and we actually received data about a half an hour ago. The Virginia Department of Education just released those numbers. So, tomorrow, I'll be combing through those numbers, and at our next work session, we'll share with you what the conference report produced. Thank you.
And so, we will now move on to the part of the work session where we have a discussion and questions, and we'll go around the room with the board members. I'll start with Ms. Jessie.
What's the impact on us in terms of our plans for preschool?
Again, the conference, the conference budget has not, the data has just been released. I don't have the impacts that were finalized on Sunday. That's what we'll be sharing. This is what happened on February 8th, and because of timing, we just don't have the most current numbers. That you'll be able to see in about a week.
You also mentioned guidance counselors. There's been a change. Could you be more specific?
Sure. The ratios, the guidance counselor to student ratios were increased a bit, reducing our funding a bit. But again, these are preliminary numbers, and so in about a week, you'll be able to see what the final outcome is of those changes. About a week.
Ms. Satterway.
So, backing up on the guidance counselors, so was that a change to the bill or a change to the funding? And which bill actually ended up passing?
The House and Senate released their budgets, again, about two weeks ago, on the 8th. On the Senate side, they actually reduced funding for guidance counselors by reducing the guidance counselor to student ratios. Again, these are numbers that were released two weeks ago. These have changed. We just didn't get information until literally in the past half an hour to 45 minutes. So, I don't, I don't have that information for you right now.
Okay. All right. Can we ask general?
Yes. I was just gonna step in there before we get too far along here on both the counselor adjustments and the VPI. And again, there are differences between the House version and the Senate version, so they have to pound that out, and that's what's just occurred literally minutes ago, and that's what we'll bring back to you at the next work session. But just in keeping with what we've always done in any year that we have adjustments, whatever those adjustments might be, I will come back with a proposal to adjust the superintendent's proposed budget, and then you can respond to that. But I will tell you right now, it is not my intention to reduce any of the pre-K programs or the number of counselors, either one. So, if we do have to make some adjustments in the budget, we'll, we'll be looking other places.
Ms. Satterway.
Okay. Is this a time when we can ask general budget questions on anything we've had so far?
Yeah, we'll go around the room.
Okay. And if I need to put these in writing and ask them later on, that's okay. Where, we started the one-to-one devices in some of our schools at some point. Where are we with the one-to-one devices now?
I brought AJ up to make sure I get this right. This being my fourth month. So, as, the individual purchasing of the, of the devices is left up to the individual schools, but AJ can maybe talk a little bit more about where we are in terms of that.
Sure. Ms. Satterway, are you referring to just one-to-one or specifically the e-learning backpack? I guess it would be the e-learning backpack that we did at the high school level, correct? Yes. That's, that's what I'm referring to. Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. So, that, so funding for that had ended. Those schools still have those devices. They can use them now pretty much for anything, meaning they can use them for testing. They, I know at Stonewall High School last year, we were allowed them to be able to put them on, to test for SO, with SOLOs during that time, and some of the other high schools have picked up, have done that. But most of them are being utilized in classrooms in the carts. And so, at this time, I don't believe a lot of them are being taken home. They're just utilizing them as a one-to-one device. The kids come in, pick it out of the cart, use it in class, and then put it back. Okay. Can you help me with which schools it was in? I know we added a Stonewall. Where else did we have it? It was Stonewall High School, Freedom, Potomac was added in, and then Garfield. Okay. Okay, very good. Okay. And then, let's see.
Just one more. Yeah, just one more add-on to the backpack initiative. So, something else that I think is important to mention that I'm not sure, you've probably seen this somewhere, but in mathematics at the high school level, there's the use of handheld devices that are going to be phased out, and what's going to be tested is now going to be a part of a computer app. You want to tell us the name of that?
Yes, it's called the DESMOS.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Okay. It's, it's an application that can be used on a computer or on a device. Actually, my sophomore was using it the other night on her phone at home. It's very useful, but they will be able to utilize that for testing. And so, that DESMOS calculator can, like I said, it can be used on any Windows or iPad, Chromebook, any of those devices, the SOL, for any of the SOL tests.
So, year after next, that's going to be required to be used? That is going to be the state requirement to be used. So, therefore, having, making sure that all of our students have, all of our students have access to computers with these, with this app on it is going to be critical. So, we'll be able to have a year-plus doing that. And the other thing that's in the budget is there's a considerable amount of money that we have analyzed all the devices in the school division in terms of the refresh cycle. We do not receive enough money from the state to properly refresh all the computers that we have and make sure they're up and running on the current systems and that sort of thing. So, that's imperative, too. So, we will take those computers and all the others that we have and make sure that we have a much more ambitious refresh program going into next year and making sure that all kids have plenty of opportunities to use that now on computer application in mathematics.
Okay. And what is this app called again? DESMOS. D E S M O S, I believe. Okay. All right. So, is this going to replace these, this is replacing the use of the calculator then? Yes.
At least on the SOLOs. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that they'll never use those again, but...
So, in higher math, we're still using the TIs or whatever for higher math, correct? Correct, but the... Not on the SOL, but for... Correct, but this calculator, they will be able to use for the higher math classes as well in the SOL. Okay. Okay. And are we purchasing extra devices for this or just using this on laptops?
Combination of both.
Okay. Can you send us a write-up on this, what, what the app is, what kind of devices?
Sure.
Okay. I'm just, I'm asking for the purchasing, and what kind of devices are we...
Yes, we can send you something, and we can have our, Amy Hickey, supervisor of mathematics, can assist with providing that information.
Okay. And while you're sitting there, I had a question on, what is the, there was $680,000 that was mentioned when we received the preliminary budget for CTE. What exactly is that going to be going to?
Yeah, that's a different...
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
I was looking real quick, see if there's anything else to ask you specifically.
So, I'll speak to the Cliff Notes version of that, and then we'll ask Ken Bassett if he wants, if you want more detail. So, the board has been very interested in the expansion of our CTE programs, and each and every year, we have had expansions to that program. Additionally, we have done a much better job, I think, of marketing the programs we have. You may remember that a year ago, we did a whole series of very short videos. They're very readily accessible on all kinds of devices, so you can go in to your iPhone and see those videos. And again, they're very like high-energy, showing what those different programs are. So, there has been an increasing desire to expand CTE on, on the part of the administration and the school board. So, we asked Mr. Wright and his staff and members of the CTE program that are, are teachers to work collaboratively to develop essentially a, I believe it's a three-year, a five-year plan on expanding what we're doing in CTE. So, there are some courses that we're going to be adding. And then furthermore, they had to take a fairly sizable amount of their budget for their computer refresh. In order to give a more ambitious CTE program, we're going to cover the cost of the refresh so they do not have to take it out of their budget, and that's a fairly significant amount of money as well. So, that five-year plan and, and the rollout of all of that came before the staff, and this budget approves the program as proposed by Mr. Wright and his staff.
Do you have a question on the same issue?
So, has the board seen that five-year plan as far as the plan? I think we provided something in a board update.
I think it was in a board update. We can research that. But certainly, you have to approve every course that we add through the normal course sequencing. So, at some point, not that long, yeah, not long ago, you approved the expanded coursework for next year. So, each year, anything that we add comes before the school board for your approval.
Right.
So, the electrical course is the one that you approved for next year.
I know the courses do individually, and I'm used to that. I'm just thinking as far as from a, individual course is, is different from a five-year whole plan, so I think it would be probably good for us to get...
I think we sent that to you, but we'll, we'll double-check and we'll make sure you have it.
Because the other thing that, that plays into is I know there's been several of us on the board wanting to have a discussion with regard to our CTE program, and should we look to try and do some sort of consolidated CTE program at a school or something like that, or at least in some fashion, try and give some more opportunities to some of those kids to try different things.
We'll, we'll get the plan to you.
Ms. Satterway.
Thank you. The sinking fund for the radio system, I know we're doing this on a regular basis so we're not hit, thank you. I know we're doing this on a regular basis so we aren't hit all at once when it comes time to replacing it, but I was just wondering for an update, where are we in the savings toward that goal? So, we've been doing this for a few years now. I know we're making up for some lost time.
Yeah. Well, we made up for the lost time because we had a year that we had to have a major expenditure because we weren't setting aside money. So, ever since that occurred, we have set aside money each and every year. So, I'll let John speak to the specifics of that.
Yeah. So, thus far, we've put away about $1.3 million towards that upgrade. This, the $750,000 you mentioned will supplement that, and we've got a way to, ways to go.
Okay. And what, where are we, is what, every 10 years we're replacing it, is that correct?
That's about, that's about what, that's about the timeframe it takes. There have been meetings going on with Mr. Crowe and some of the folks over at Prince Wing County, planning for the future on those issues. The biggest expense there is replacing radios and buses. That's, that's where the big cost is.
Okay.
So, the good news on that is we were also told that some of these radios are going to have a longer life than we anticipated. So, we're feeling in a pretty good position as to where we are.
Okay. And about where are we, if it were 10 years, about how far are we into it? Are we about halfway? I'm trying to recall when we started saving.
I think we've been, yeah, we've been putting about $300,000 a year away for probably five years now, I think.
Okay.
Roughly.
Okay. Let's see, in the special education audit, under the purchases for this, and I can't remember if it's year-end or if it's in the budget for this year, but there was a designation of $75,000 for communication devices, and a constituent asked me what they were and asked if Medicaid would cover some of those, and wanted to understand what the difference, what, what exactly was going to be covered there.
We'll ask Dr. Roper, we'll ask Dr. Roper to join us for that. Just press the, yeah. And I would also like to mention, we actually put in another position to help with that. Come to find out, we only had one person literally servicing the whole school division. So, we've upped that by 100%, and that person is already in place.
Okay.
And so, devices include anything like maybe an iPad, an eye-gazed device, any type of thing that helps with communication or writing or anything like that. This amount would help to purchase them for students to have in schools. Some parents do choose to purchase an extra device through Medicaid, but it is the obligation of the school division to provide them if the students need them at school.
Okay. So, so we don't purchase devices through Medicaid for students in school? So, that's solely for parents at home?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I wasn't clear on because I haven't had that experience. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, I'll let somebody else have fun. Thank you.
Ms. Williams.
What if you have a budget? And here?
The ombudsman.
A budget person.
The ombudsman is currently in the executive administrative budget.
That was my main question. I guess follow-up to that, is, does that, the budget amount include things for startups like marketing and all of those, and then administrator for the ombudsman, those type of things?
It currently includes none of those items that you've asked about. The only thing that's in the budget currently is the salary for the, for the staff.
I'll email you.
Understand.
Mr. Trenum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the first, first question I have is, on the county side of the equation, the, I'm assuming that our budget is based on the five-year plan that was produced for, where's the county stand on their advertised tax rate and stuff like that? You know?
The plan currently is to maintain the tax rate at what it is, what it's been over the five-year plan that was put in place last year. There is no plan on changing that tax rate.
Has it been advertised yet?
It has not been advertised yet.
Okay. So, the next question is, has to do with state stuff, and because it's, so I'll just, the state is, the state is saying that they, that they are funding a 5% teacher raise. Now, could you explain how that's set up as far as, is it over one year, over two year? How is that split? Is it teachers only, teachers and support staff, all that kind of stuff?
So, Mr. Trenum, first question, how is it spread across the years? That is a two-year in this current biennium, fiscal '19 current year, fiscal '20, 5%. And this is one of the things I mentioned at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, and that is, we're putting in place a 4.8% raise in the current fiscal year, or excuse me, for fiscal '20, the coming fiscal year. We also had a 2.8% raise in the current fiscal year. So, when you compare the state's numbers to our numbers, we actually have a 7.5% increase over the two-year period. The state's funding a 5% increase, but there are several factors that play into that as well. For example, that money comes through the composite index, so we're not receiving the full amount. It's also based on salaries, average salaries statewide, and our average salaries are higher than statewide salaries. So, the money that we get from the state to support that 5% raise over the two years doesn't come close to actually supporting the full...
7.5%.
And it's only for SOQ positions, that's correct.
Right. That's, that's part of, for the, for the composite index portion, can you ballpark about what, out of that 5%, how much of that 5% we have to cover? And that 5% of the statewide average for SOQ positions only, how much of that will come out of the state with the composite index? How much do we have to make?
The composite index roughly splits 60, 40. In other words, we get 60% of the cost from the state, we cover 40% of it ourselves. What the exact numbers are on, on the SOQ positions, the dollars that we would get on that 5%, I don't have that, but I can certainly get that.
Yeah. Thank you on that. See, see, the next question I had was, this is just more of a request as opposed to actually a question to answer, because I know you're not going to have the, have it with you on hand. If we could get the, for pupil allocations for the high school, the middle school, the elementary school levels, and also for the, the traditional schools, that model, and any other flavors we have, just, just to try and catch them off. So, if we could get that. The other thing I'd like, and you may already have this, but I know, because I know we've done this in the past, if we could take, get the pay scale as far as what each step represents as far as a percentage bump for each step in the pay scale? I know you all have done that in the past.
Sure.
And also, the number of, the number of people we have at each step, just so we can see where that breaks out.
So, while we're on the, while we're on the pay, Mr. Wallingford, if you could also explain what we're doing to adjust the beginning teacher's step one and step two?
Okay. So, we're, what we're doing is we're doing really two things. One, we're getting rid of the bottom step on the scale, and what that does is it brings people in, it brings new teachers in at a, at a higher rate, at a higher pay rate, and we're also adding a, a step to the end of the scale. So, those two things combined bring people in higher, and it allows folks who are at the top to actually move up as well.
Thanks, I appreciate that. And those requests that I have. Let's flip to the CIP for a few minutes, just some questions. Some of them I may have asked before, I just didn't write down something like that. On the security improvements that the Infrastructure Task Force recommended, I know we funded a bunch, funded a good chunk of those out of the end of, end of your funds last year, and then we also have funds in this budget to cover those. After this year, does that get, are we, are we, are we covered with all the security improvements that the CIP, that the Infrastructure Task Force recommended, or do we know?
I believe that catches us up with the, the basic items that we had talked about from the Infrastructure Task Force relative to the, it was like a, a listing of about four or five specific items, because I didn't want to get, I didn't want to get specific here, that there were about four or five specific items within security that were identified. We had gone through that list. We should catch that up, and we could certainly get that, to confirm that with you. And that, that includes the, the funding of an additional million this, this coming year to help facilitate that process.
Okay. I noticed, I noticed with some of the, a few of the Infrastructure Task Force recommended recommendations from the high schools and middle schools have made its way into the CIP already. We started looking at where the rest of them, where, how we may want to tie those in for the CIP in the future years, and also some of the elementary stuff. I know with, like, the story rooms and, and the strange rooms and stuff like that, we talked about the time to do that is when you're going in and doing any major renovation anyway to kind of get this process. We started weighing out where some of that stuff we think is going to fall.
I don't know that there's a formal list. As we go through the CIP process, like this year and in the future, a part of that element is to look at specifically for those renovations and renewals of the older schools, to look at what's on those lists and look at, first to see which ones can or can't be done, because there are some that you just can't do. But look at then, turn around to see how we can try and incorporate, like the science rooms. I think we, we came through the list on activity rooms. So, there, music rooms, as we go through that, that's a part of the process of looking at the specific school that's, schools, because there's usually a half a dozen each year, that come up in the process, what they would conceivably not have relative to the, the inventory that we had identified from the Infrastructure Task Force, and then see how we can add those to accomplish it.
Okay. Also coming out of the Infrastructure Task Force, I know one of the recommendations is that they, is that with some of the older schools, that we, we reprioritize the renovations or the renovations on those within the CIP, both at the middle school and the high school level. Have we started rolling that into the CIP and looking what the impact is on that yet?
That would really be something more from next year's CIP because we were most, almost done with our CIP process when the Infrastructure Task Force reported this year. Not that we didn't have sort of some inside information to go with it. As an example, yes, we'd have to look at those, but it's also a question of when each of those schools was previously done, when they would be coming up again, what it would take to advance them in the process, how much it would cost. The, the next, as an example, the next two high schools I think we have are Hilton, which is not necessarily considered an older school, except that it's essentially at a crisis point relative to the infrastructure in the building and therefore has to be done. The next one after that would be Brentsville. Beyond that is looking at this point in, we would be reaching the point of looking at sort of the, some of the older schools, Woodbridge, Garfield, Stonewall, OP, et cetera, are coming up, and the prioritization of those are looked at each year to try and identify the ones of greatest need and which one can go first, et cetera, based on the recommendations coming out of facilities for the, the status of the building.
Okay. Don't forget about the middle schools, too.
And the middle schools as well. The issue in some of them is, again, when was the last time we were there, and when would we be coming back to it? I just clarify again, sometimes what appears to be a newer building comes, may come first, but again, that in many cases also is a function of what in fact is the status in the building. And, and I think Hilton, we had more, okay, the electrical system has got to be replaced. We can't afford a failure. failure. And even though it's a newer building, it's got to go ahead of some of the older buildings.
The, oh, I know what I wanted to, before I forget. In the proposed budget executive summary, we've got a new org chart at the top. I know the proposed budget includes a new associate superintendent for support services splitting out, splitting out the financial risk management and support services into two. There's also a new associate superintendent for special education and student services listed in there. And of course, both of those come with administrative support and everything else. Do any of the other changes in the org chart drive additional staff coming out of that? I looked in the list, but I couldn't tell if they were tied to that.
I'll speak to that. Well, first of all, let me start by saying, we basically recouped savings from this year to be able to split the position of facilities, essentially the facility side of the operation, food service, and transportation, and the budget position through savings that we made in part by the shared responsibility of Mr. Mallard, and who did not have to have benefits because of his retirement, and then our ROP program, which allowed Mr. Klein to give us basically an entire month as well. So, we have basically covered that cost. That is really something that the board authorized this year.
We've talked about, we had talked about that.
Yeah. So, we did this year, we did that, and next year, but we're just formalizing it in the actual budget. And then next year, we're splitting out...
Well, I see where accountability is now, all of a sudden, it's some thing at that same level.
That will not involve any other staffing. We're just having a different reporting structure on that. I think we also moved one of the schools out west, back to Mrs. Hart. Where is she? Yes. Which school was that? Yes, so Haymarket is being moved. And then, there are some additional positions in places where we do not have an administrative coordinator in certain offices that almost all other offices have at least one other person helping them. As you recall, the board commissioned, directed the staff to do a staffing study, and a staffing study, a compensation, and through that, it was very clearly identified, the comparisons by, in a per pupil way, with our neighbors, and we're dramatically behind. So, this is like a small step in the right direction to try to do some of the things that were put forth in that independent study commissioned by the school board.
If I could follow up, I think to answer your question in sort of another way, there's really not any additional organizational structure that's been added simply to facilitate new organization. The remainder of the existing departments have been realigned to match up with the changes in the associates. And even the shift in accountability then shifted the responsibility from the associate to the deputy. But it didn't add any specific, any additional specific administration to support it.
Thank you. One last question. I know the, and I probably could have just looked at Thomas, but I didn't. The school boards' salary were increased. What's the proposed school?
So, there is a very specific time that is laid out in Virginia code that says when...
Last year's, yeah.
Yes, when school boards can adjust their compensation. And over the 14-year period of time, that's been discussed pretty much every single time that opportunity has arisen. And so, this is the, I believe, the third time we have made a proposal to adjust the school board salaries. This proposal that is in front of you is essentially the exact same proposal as one year ago, only with one more year added. And so, when people are asking, you know, I've had a few people ask me, and we've had our communications office have had a few questions, and the question that is most often asked is, how did you come up with this figure? So, the folks in finance, essentially what they did is they started at the last time the school board adjusted its compensation. And then they looked at the average employee salary increase for each subsequent year, and as though you had received that. So, if you received the exact same raise, some years it was, you know, 4%, some years it was 1.7, we had a year it was zero. So, every single year, whatever the average employee increase was, the finance folks increased that salary by that amount. And that's how that figure was obtained.
What is the figure?
The figure is for individual board members, $26,520, and the chairman is $29,040. And again, I don't know what, I am not, we'd have to look, we'd have to look at the salary study. I don't, off the top of my head, recall if that included the other jurisdictions around, but certainly that's quite small compared to Fairfax. And quite frankly, I mean, you know, obviously, you all will decide what you want to do. But sometimes I find it a bit interesting that we're constantly compared to Fairfax, but when it comes to things that involve money, we want to have everything just like Fairfax, except the money piece. Well, I will tell you, this is substantially less than board members are paid there. Yes, and they have staff. Now, not to give short shrift to the fact that we have an excellent clerk and a deputy clerk, but in addition to having that in Fairfax, there's also additional staff for board members. Done? We'll move on to Ms. Jessie.
I think David, where is Mr. Klein? Last night at the PLC, that meeting, we were talking about per pupil expenditure and trailers, and somehow, this is one of the supervisors said, well, why are we, would taking care of trailers, would that adversely affect per pupil expenditure? Is there any correlation? In other words, why not spend this money for per pupil rather than looking at trailer reduction? I'm not sure what the correlation is.
I don't know that there's a specific correlation. Certainly, within the context of the budget, we have a deliberative choice that we could use monies to increase funding, which shows up in the per pupil allocation. Or we could use monies to fund debt service, which is used to construct additional buildings to get rid of trailers. Each budget is a matter of options and priorities, as recommended by the superintendent and adopted by the board.
The other question that we had was looking at the CIP, and as we look at some of the objectives, which really included the boundary changes, we looked at trailer reduction. So, last night, I mean, Monday night, there was this discussion about whether or not the board supervisors really need to consider us, since we're looking at boundary, that we're doing our own trailer reduction. Did you?
If I can follow up on that, for the next work session, we will come back and have a discussion relative to trailer reduction elimination. If you recall, the school board and the board of county supervisors each passed a resolution in the fall requesting that we bring forward within our CIP, a plan or a, what would it take, what are the costs, what's the timing, to have a plan to theoretically eliminate trailers? Within the context of the proposed CIP, we have put it in there. It is not necessarily funded. That's the point we wanted, we had to make the other night. So, we will, if you'll bear with me for one more week, we will come back and have that discussion at our next work session.
Okay. The other question, transportation, would that be Mr. Mallard? Come on over.
Like a little company.
I wanted some clarification on the bus driver situation, because one of the critical unmet needs was to attract highly qualified individuals. And maybe I'm misreading this, but on page 28, under transportation, explain to me the 22.1 non-FTE reduction. And I'm just kind of confused. Okay.
Right now, we've been, our budget last year was for 781 drivers. As of December 1st, we had 688. And the world of transportation and economy today, there's no way that we're going to be able to hire 93 drivers in a year. There's...
But we still need drivers.
We still need drivers, but if we take the 22 FTEs and take them and put them towards other necessary, like improving customer service and efficiency, and dispatchers and stuff like that, then we'll have 71 drivers. And that is what we need. That's what we need to fill all our seats and have radio drivers.
So, we're going to take some of the resources that are currently allocated or directed towards bus drivers that we realistically would never be able to fill those.
You're looking at a goal.
I'm sorry.
You're looking at a goal instead of actual...
Even with the reassignment of the 22 positions to other areas that would help us with efficiency, with dispatch, we would still, we think it would be very difficult to hire the number of bus drivers that would still be allocated for us.
And this strategy, a more effective strategy for attracting, do you have some type of plan in mind, or what are you guys looking at for that? Because we, it's definitely a problem.
That's for the recruitment.
Yes, so we have a recruitment, an HR person who is completely dedicated to the recruitment function. So, there are a number of other large school systems that are quite successful by having an employee like this. In fact, if it wouldn't have been for the fact that, you know, we've been in this great recession, year after year after year, we should have had someone like that dedicated to that function. And so, we're excited and optimistic, and we're going to work very, very hard to get a top drawer recruiter, along with some other creative incentives that we're working on. And quite frankly, just to name one, that we started this year, we have our first group of teachers from Parkside Middle School that are actually, are they, at what point are they literally on the road?
Still working?
We have them on the road.
We have one on the road now. Now, you may think, well, one, all right, if that's your child's bus route, and we've improved the service to anywhere from, you know, 40 to 60 passengers, that's a good improvement. So, we have several others in the queue.
We have four ready to come out this month.
Well, my next question, my final question is instructional, so Rita is not here, so what?
Rita is not here, but I'm happy to try to answer the question, and we also have Ken Bassett here. And if we can't answer, we will get the answers to you, Ms. Jessie.
Is your favorite Minneville, won the De Four De Four Award. I don't know if you guys realize how big that is.
Yes.
It is huge.
Well, it's the only one in the country.
In the country. It's international.
Well, it's international.
It's Australia, Singapore, they're everywhere. And the De Four De Four model, and when I was looking on page 36 for the PLC, I just want to know if we are implementing PLC, are we implementing the De Four De Four model as it is implemented at Minneville? Or are we doing PLC Lite? Are we going to end up with a PLC model that doesn't correlate with? I've got two people ready to answer.
Well, I think it's very well correlated, but I'd like to ask Mr. Bassett and Ms. Hart to come up to respond to that. And in terms of, certainly the other two elementary-level associates, if you want to join us, please, we have two extra seats.
Thank you for the question. The School Division put out a request for proposals for... The School Division put out a request for proposals for services that would support the division's implementation of professional learning communities. And one of the stipulations or criteria that were included in that request were, was the fact that we were looking for something that was based on the De Four model of professional learning communities. So, those criteria were baked into what we asked folks to come present us with their pitches with, if you will. We had a committee of principals who sat on a panel, reviewed those proposals from the different vendors who came, and we selected, what's the language, the most responsive and responsible vendor with their bid and proposal for implementing that. And we have a three-year implementation plan that we've contracted with the American Institutes for Research to help us implement our professional learning communities rollout.
Ms. Hart, do you want to comment on the type of, you know, the comment that Ms. Jessie made, is this really going to be professional learning communities, or is this PLC Lite? Could you respond to that question?
It is absolutely professional learning communities with the De Four model, and it has been very well received by school teams.
Because I'm telling you, if you, PLC Lite, you're going to have a bunch of angry teachers, because you know, you can just start spinning our wheels. And I just, I've been promoting this for a long time, because it really works. And for us to have Minneville to end up with this is just phenomenal. I don't know what we plan to do to celebrate that, but we really need to celebrate that. Thank you. Thank you for all four of you coming up.
Ms. Jessie, I think it's important for you to know, just like you, we want the Mercedes model of professional learning communities, and we have it.
Those are the ones that are expensive and tank.
I think Lori, you seem to have one question.
So, I just want to go back to the one-to-one initiative, and I'm wondering if there's any assistance that we can provide, or what do we know budgetary-wise, how it affects a school, particularly like Title I schools, even though I know we don't have a designation for middle and high school, how that's going to affect their operating budget, because it's imperative at this point, I mean, that kids have this technology. And I know as you get older, a lot of the kids have phones, so they can supplement using their handheld devices. But with the changes coming down the pipeline in education, I'm really concerned about the elementary school level students and how that impacts the principal's budget, whether they're going to be having to lay off staff in order to buy these devices. I'm being extreme, I'm sure, but I think it's also, I'm looking at it from an equity perspective as well. And we don't have to answer that as soon as you don't have all of them.
I'm happy to speak to it, because I couldn't agree more with you of the importance of that, and to make sure that each and every child has that same opportunity with technology. So, I would say one of the best things that happens in this budget in terms of that technology is the fact that there is a much-needed infusion of money into refreshing the computers that we have. So, basically, what has happened in these years where we've had the Great Recession, we get this pot of money from the state, and it's called the State Refresh Program. But we have to pick and choose the computers that we're going to be able, you know, to basically install and refresh those computers. What this does is a systematic approach to taking virtually all the computers we have, and systematically refreshing them so that the ones that we have, which are many, are going to be usable. Another thing that we've done and that we're expanding on in this budget are the computers that are available on a cart. And those are very, very convenient. A lot of teachers like those, because you can roll them right into your classroom. You don't have to pack everything up, you know, schedule your time in the computer lab, move your class down there. You move the lab right into, and they're in a very large box container, and you can take those out. So, we have been slowly adding to that, but there is another infusion of those as well. So, we think that we're... So we think that we're making a huge leap in addressing that equity issue in this budget.
And when we talk computers, are we talking like laptop devices? Are we talking tablets? Or is it just up to the?
It's a combination of both, but one of the things that we're really looking at now is trying to, you know, with site-based management, we, as all of you know, that's the greatest thing on earth and until it's not with some issue. But one of the things that we're looking at is what kinds of devices can we maximize our price and at the same time be able to systematically put these into buildings so that we're not trying to support 15 different types of devices at the elementary level, which is really not the best way to do it. So we are going to become a little bit more restrictive about what we're going to offer to principals that they can purchase, but we think that we'll be able to more effectively utilize the money. The other thing is we've made a huge amount of progress through our business partnerships. In fact, you know, I'll just take one school for example. We had a partnership with Amazon and they basically came in and got a device for every single child, I believe it was second grade. Yes, second grade, I went over there for that event. But that's not the only business partner that is helping us with this goal as well. So I think we're making real headway, but there is a much more significant improvement in this budget.
And then my last question for that is, are we sending any staff to help educate our principals who have the fine decision on the applications and usability of the devices, like to help them determine what's the best use for what their needs are? Because like, I'm not an expert and if you gave me a list like four, I'm going to go usually with what I'm most familiar with. And I just, for, I didn't know, so.
Right. So we have a collaborative initiative that's essentially taking place under the direction of our new associate, Mr. Gilfoyle, and A.J. Phillips, who's the Director of Technology, who is also the, on the instructional side prior to the position that she's in now. So I think one of the greatest things about bringing A.J. on the team is that she had the instructional background and has already a rapport with our principals from both the instructional vantage point and the technology. And so we're working with student learning and the levels to basically pull together, these are the devices that are going to be available, this will serve whatever your purpose is. So for example, let's take the calculators that are going to be on that app. Okay, well, you need a certain type of computer to be able to operate that kind of thing. So the operational functionality will be laid out so that principals, not just principals, but department heads and also supervisors in the Department of Student Learning will understand, this is what you need to get. So I'll just give you one example. We went to Amy Hickey and basically said, so we want to make sure we get it right for these computers with mathematics because we want to make sure every child has a full year in order to use this. What is it that you need? And so she was the facilitator of going out to all the mathematics teachers and pulling that information in. And then we, in the Department of Technology, analyzed all the computers that we currently have and what would the impact of a refresh be on some of those. So it's a very complex and big effort, but we're already rolling down, assuming this is going to happen.
Well, since you said A.J.'s in charge, I know that we're exceedingly good hand. Every time I send her something, she's always like, come on that. I've already surpassed that. So, and I just have a question for you, A.J. Do we compare, knowing how the trends of education are? I'm sorry. What, how useful it will be in the, like, are we looking at it long-term, whether or not it would be useful in the future for computers and laptops in our schools versus tablets? Because, you know, like, the mobile internet is a lot larger than our computer-use internet and those types of things I've learned from going to conferences. Is that something that your department continuously analyzes? And then how does that impact your, the information going down to our school systems?
So basically, the first conversation I usually have with principals is when they say, hey, I want to buy this device. And the first question I always have is, what's your learning outcome? What are you trying to do with that device? So it's always the first question I have and they sometimes moan and groan at me. But then we get to the technical aspects of it. And so once I know what their learning outcome is, what they're trying to do for personalized learning, things like that, then we choose a device. We do have a mixture of mobile devices and laptops. I can say that I am trying to push schools more away from the desktops. And we all are looking, are looking at more personal devices for elementary level especially, a little more rugged ones that when they drop on the floor, they're not going to break easily. And I will say the technology world is definitely embracing that with little kids, you know, for the elementary level. And at the high school level, even for teachers, in middle school, they take their devices home to work. And so we really are looking more at the laptops for staff and also for students. We are looking at some type of tablets, but the use case in those, they usually only last about three years. And so we can get a little more out of a laptop. Usually we can go up to three to five years on those, typically five. And so sometimes that, in this day and age with refreshing, that sometimes is the best bang for our buck.
Yeah, thank you. I was just, having both worlds, where a high schooler and an elementary schooler, the elementary schooler thinks an actual desktop is like a toy, it's fun to play on.
Yeah.
And the high schooler has just recently switched over to tablets where the same applications you have on a desktop or a laptop are available right now on tablets. So I just wanted to know, like, where we, as a division, how we stay.
Yeah, we have a mixture of everything. And at the elementary level, I especially like the kids to have some kind of touchscreen because that's in their computer science standards that they have to have that touch piece included. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anybody else? Go.
Thank you. First off, I want to follow up on Ms. Jesse's questions on transportation piece a little bit ago. And just so y'all know, while we're sitting here, I've got the Desmos app on my phone now. It's free and easy. For Android and iPhone. Okay, so when you're talking about the 22 positions that you restructured, so did we reduce the amount of bus drivers? Did we leave the net number of positions? Because I haven't gone through this yet. With the 22 people moving around, did we just leave the net the same and just move some bus drivers down into the 22 and just reduce those? Do you follow the question?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, that's what we like to do, yes.
Okay. And so, and I guess the question is, if we, well, another question is, if we don't anticipate being able to fill the bus driver slots, what are we going to do with the funds that we're budgeting for them?
We've been using them for overtime because my management's been driving and then the bus drivers are driving, so most of it depends if it's going overtime.
Okay. The last piece is, I want to talk about the piece with the coaches and teachers, giving them the ability to drive and stuff like that. I know we've done the Parkside thing and that's good. What's the plans to take advantage of the summertime and try and pump as many through as we can find? Because the reason why I ask is because I've talked to several peoples at different schools that were really interested in getting some of their staff to go through it. And they're like, when can we get Jack a chance? So I'm just curious what our plans are for that.
So I can tell you, the first cohort that we put through of coaches, we actually paid for these coaches to take professional leave. And we took three days with Shirley's training staff to take them through the classroom and the safety and those kinds of areas. So we have a second cohort, we're going to do the same thing. We also have a list of middle schools that have staff that are interested. So we're willing to have classes in the summer, weekends, whenever, whatever suits the needs of the teachers or coaches, we're willing to meet that.
You said it's just three days worth of classroom?
Three days in a classroom and, I mean, you can take us through the training.
Oh, I'd do that. That'd be fun.
Yeah.
Retirement.
Well, the first thing we do is we pull a bus up and we have them get on that bus and crank the bus up and grab the steering wheel and we always lose a few at that point. It is very intimidating.
I'm in. I'm in, let's go.
I've done everything in the school system but drive a bus.
Well, he's volunteering, so that's all he can do.
All right, we're going to.
As soon as he's off the board, we'll schedule him some Christmas training.
He can make an early run for it.
All right.
I don't know, years ago, I don't know how long, but it seems that we were using people in dual positions, like teacher aides or people working in cafeteria, depending on the hours, they could be a cafeteria worker and a bus driver. Are we looking at teacher assistants and people who don't have a lot, they can just purchase teachers to drive buses?
The answer is yes. So with our first focus was on teachers, the coaches and teachers that wanted to drive activity buses because historically we've had some significant problems with athletic field trips or field trips in general that would like to depart their school at eight o'clock. And that's where, that's when we're out picking up students and delivering students. So our first focus was on the teachers and the coaches. We believe that there's a huge market out there with classified personnel, cafeteria workers that come in perhaps a half-day, that come in at 10, leave at 1:00. They could drive for us in the morning, drive for us in the afternoon. So that's our next, years ago, we had, in fact, in fact, Shirley, she did it.
I did it.
She drove a bus, well, actually, she was a bus attendant.
Well, yeah, first.
First.
Okay. One more. For tonight.
Okay. So at the joint CIP meeting on Monday evening, they, actually, this is an A.J. question.
Good.
So, great.
Thank you.
So at the...
You can always have a job.
How you doing? So at the joint CIP meeting on Monday night, our staff and the county staff briefed out the CIPs. And one of the things I noticed as a county staff is they're doing their own private cloud infrastructure. And so my question is, what have we done to leverage that so we can use their stuff for free?
We're getting Mr. Gilfoyle up here as well. That is a very timely...
Are you able to speak to the...
We can talk cloud all night long.
Yeah, absolutely.
We have some brand-new news, which is very exciting.
So a couple of things related to that. One is that first, it's important to note that the new, the hub, as we're calling it, the new student information system, is going to be cloud-based. That's going to be running off of Amazon Web Services. So it will be available 24/7, available from anywhere. The speeds and will should improve customer service tremendously. As a parent, I'm looking forward to it. Yes. As a director of IT, I'm looking forward to it. But on a, related to that, the other work that A.J. has been doing and the team, we've been working with the county, we've met multiple times with the Chief Information Officer for the county. They have space at Iron Mountain Data Center, it's a Tier III data center, that brand-new facility. And we are working to partner with them. And over time, we have a plan, we're building a plan now, to consolidate our current data centers that we maintain here and other sites around the county into the Iron Mountain Center. The cost actually is not that significant because the county has already negotiated and we're going to be able to work with them to take advantage of that. And we'll be paying our own way, just in terms of only the servers that we'll be consolidating to the data center. So we're in the early stages of that process now, but we believe that there'll be significant benefits in the long run. A.J., anything else you want to add?
Yeah, we actually have a phone call with them, a working phone call with them on Friday morning. So I'm hoping we don't have a code red, Dr. Walts.
You can work, you can work from home.
Tell it work.
Okay, okay, okay. So never mind, I can tell it work, we're all set, don't worry. But yeah, we have a call on Friday, we're already starting the planning processes and figuring out, you know, what servers we're putting over there and what we're putting virtual and things like that. So we're very excited.
When can we expect to see something coming out of that?
The summer. The summer, we'll have some stuff moved in there.
Since we have you two here, I didn't see the cost increase for Dr. Twitters, Dr. Walts' Twitter account and the support services for that. Did anyone include that in here? I didn't see that. Or is that on his own time?
Fortunately, Twitter, you know, is a free service.
I definitely have some questions still. I'll keep it short though for tonight still. On page nine of the executive summary, there's a chart at the bottom on the left and it's showing how much is spent instruction facilities, management, central support. And a question was asked of us, how much of the 79% for instruction is salary and how much of that goes toward other instruction costs itself? And so I know you probably can't give me that number right now, but if you could get that for us, that would be helpful. Because I know we're a people business and a lot of it probably is salary, we're wondering what the split is.
I think you're referring to page nine of the executive.
The small...
Of the executive summary, yeah. And so I was looking for that while Dr. Walts was pulling out, so I missed your question.
Okay.
So if you could do that again, so quickly, please.
Sure, no problem. So at the bottom of the page, the where it goes, 79% is for instruction. And so the question that I was asked is, how much of that is for salary and how much of that goes to other instruction costs?
Yeah, and I don't have that all throughout my...
Right. I figured you have to get that.
And it's essentially, it's mostly salary and benefits.
Right, right. And I figured that would be most of it. Related finance question to Mr. Walling, while you're writing things down.
I'm listening.
So on page 201 of the big book, it has the aquatics budget, the Aquatic Center Fund. But what I can't find is the income we have coming in for aquatics. And so if we could get numbers on what the income has been from, since we've opened the aquatic center to current, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I just have a couple of questions, minor quick, on the page five of the big budget. And John, I spent a couple hours with you yesterday, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
I just want to understand, so, and I appreciate the trends, but on the virtual high school tuition, so I think that's a great program. Two of my kids have participated in that so far and I think it's fabulous. And I see that, you know, in 2018, 646,000 came in in revenues and then 19, 360, and now 20 is 540 expected revenues. I assume that's what that is. You know, I know, we don't create this program to make money, but just to understand, as its popularity increases, do we expect this to trend continued upward?
All right.
Or Dr. Walts, either one.
Yes, yes, we do anticipate this continuing upward. So there's one thing I'd like, Dara Duggar, who's Ausmap and virtual high school at this, at least at this juncture. One of the things that she did when she came into this position, which I think was so amazing, and I'd like her to share that with you, that is, again, goes right to the whole equity issue. If you would take, you can respond to what I already said about it trending upward, but would you please say the change that you made walking in the door and the change, the effect that it had on some of our needy students?
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
So we reduced the amount for students who meet the qualification of economically disadvantaged to $125. So while there has been a decrease overall, it will increase now because I think it has opened up the door for more students to enroll in the program.
Outstanding.
And we're looking at trying to expand that to students in middle school as well. So I think that that trend will definitely increase over the next couple of years.
So what at one point, three years ago, cost almost approximately $400, costs $125.
So that explains the decrease.
Yes.
But now we...
Students on free and reduced lunch.
That is a fantastic effort and I really appreciate that.
But I think since she initiated that, I wanted you to hear it from her.
I, I thank you. I mean, you know, we talk about technology and devices. Of all the things that I've seen, you know, the kids participate in, that program really takes advantage of them in a way that students, regardless of income or socioeconomic status, can really take advantage of in a real way. I mean, it's very organized, it's, it's very efficient, it's very productive, and I think it's an outstanding program. So I look forward to seeing that positive trend. But that is a great, great effort, and so thank you so much for clarifying that for me. And then I wanted to, a couple just comments, and then I'll have some more offline questions that I, that we can address at the, the next work session. But just on Desmos, one of the cool things on that, just Allison and for the rest of the board to understand, and this cat's, he's doing our entire budget on Desmos now, by the way. Yo, Trenton, we'll have a Desmos printout at the end of the evening for the work session one. And I give a lot of credit to Amy Hickey and the math department. They anticipated this issue at the beginning of the year, so all math classes, especially the advanced levels, have been asked to do everything with Desmos, whether it be the app, whether their advice from the beginning of the school year. So this is not something that's new and thrown out here. The SOLs are requiring that they, the SOLs, you have to use their version. So the schools have said, "We want you to practice using their version because that's what you're going to be tested on the entire year." So it's not something that they're just throwing in. So I want to be very clear that this is not new. This is something our math department has anticipated and frankly has done an excellent job of implementing its orientation to all of our students. Second, again, as I've gone through the budget, and I've been very impressed with the efforts the staff have made, and, you know, as I look at the trends, I think Prince William County Schools does an excellent job at efficiency and productivity and keeping our budgets extremely efficient and not major changes and large jumps year to year. The jumps that I, that we see this year are really significant, and they are, as Dr. Waltz outlined in the six budget pri, six budget priorities or the buckets that we talked about. And I do want to, you know, comment on that. I am excited by the raise that we're giving, and I'm appreciative to the staff for working on that for all, all teachers. I think that is fantastic. And, you know, I think I've talked to a number of people, they hadn't had a standing ovation during a budget presentation before, and so that happened three weeks ago, and so I want to congratulate you all. But again, for the public and for the board members, all of us, as we look at the superintendent's proposed budget, and this is on, online, which really gets to the heart of the major changes in this year's budget, and they are all very good investments in the future of the kids. And so I want to thank you all for this, thank you all for coming out tonight for this work. I think we have our next budget work session next Thursday night. Is that correct? The seventh of March? Is that right?
Yes.
So March seventh, six o'clock, we'll be back here with further questions or concerns. But again, thank you all, and if there's no objections, I'd like to, well, unless Gil wants to make some Desmos comments.
No, actually, I was going to let you know that Virginia is just destroying, that's Georgia Tech.
Okay, all right, well, there we go. Thank you all very much, have a great night.